Item at the end of the agenda and then, which is an informal discussion about the food pantry. And so I would like to call this meeting to order at 6:35. There's the Harwich Planning Board meeting at 7:32 Main Street on the 23rd of May. This is being held in person and is maybe available as a live meeting on Channel 18. Members with the public with an interest who are watching, with any interest in any portion or specific item on the agenda should plan on in-person attendance. Is there anybody in the room that wants to record this meeting? Mass General Law indicates that anybody who does wish to record must notify the chair. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead. Would I, I'd like to invite you all to join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, before we get into our public hearings, I'm going to jump to the back on board business with the informal discussion with Mr. James Mariam. Would you please hop up to the chair, to the hot seat? Why don't you, if you'd like to stand there or whatever, whatever is easiest for you? I know I've seen some correspondence with Mr. Alciodis, the planning, the planner, town planner, and why don't you introduce yourself and let's get our discussion underway here.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. I'm Jim Mariam. I have spent a lot of time in this room in another capacity. I haven't been in the room for about 10 years, so.
Welcome back.
Thank you, and thank you all for serving the town in this capacity. I'm here representing the Family Pantry of Cape Cod, which is located at 133 Queen Anne Road. And as you know, your application requires the approval of the landowner. And so I'm happy to report as of this morning, we have a fully executed license agreement with the Board of Selectmen.
Perfect.
So now I can document on your application with the consent of the property owner. So you've probably been reading about federal cutbacks in the SNAP program and the need, the poverty on the Cape, in particular those that are really needing services in a number of capacities, but our clientele has been increasing. And on the property, it's tight. We have about 50 parking places. It's not enough. And going back to probably about 15 years ago, Mary Anderson and I switched roles. And she and I negotiated a tenure license agreement to build a garden on town-owned property to the rear of 133 Queen Anne Road. And it's a, it's a quite productive garden, produces between 5,000 and 6,000 pounds of fresh vegetables a year. And so having gone through that experience, it was my idea to, to explore whether or not we could expand the adjacent parcel from the garden into additional parking to try to alleviate the crunch that we have right now. I've got pictures as of, as of this morning. There are lines of cars waiting. We have turnover and our shifts turnover. One shift has to leave before the next shift can come in because there's not enough spaces. Clients are parking all over the place. And we've got in a butter directly to our east, 139 Queen Anne Road with a number of tenants, and it's disruptive to them as well. So I've spoken to the owner of the property next door, and he heartily endorses this project and would like to see us be able to expand the parking and give him and his tenants some relief. So your application is quite extensive, quite long, and I'm looking for an expedited assistance in how we can get this parking lot built as quickly as possible. We do have board members that, that have already volunteered to construct the parking lot. I think it's going to take longer to get the permitting than it is the construction. But I, I'm looking for your help in this regard. So whatever you can do, I've, you, you do have correspondence. I believe you had a copy of the, the license agreement. You probably had.
Right.
A background and the, the project description, as well as a map showing the parcel involved. It's about a half an acre. It's just to the east of the garden, directly behind 139. There's already a ramp up to it. The topography is such that there's a, a swale, our retention basin behind and on the property of 139. Link Hooper recommended that we use a T-base. We'll probably purchase that from Robert B. Hour. And as you know, that's porous, so I'm hoping that you'd understand and kind of give us some relief with regard to any kind of drainage calcs. We do have, I do have and have been in communication with our surveyor, so I can, I can get a survey plan if, if you so wish. And then I'd probably hand that off to a, John Bologna from Coastal Engineering. He can, he can come up with a plan if that's what you're looking for. But I'm just trying to hear, hear you tonight, what kind of instructions I can give both the surveyor and the, and the engineer to fulfill your obligations of the application.
Well, may I ask a question to you then?
Certainly.
How was it left with Paul in terms of the checklist of things that he wanted to see come before us? Because usually we'll make a judgment based on what comes through the office and what the, you know.
Definitely, so this, this meeting this evening is, is to seek waivers.
Right.
And he highlighted the, the drainage.
Right.
One. But I'm asking you even a broader, you, you tell me what, is there anything else you can give me relief on to expedite the project?
Did Paul leave any instructions with this?
I think there's a memo in your packet before, whatever it says. And I could just suggest the next meeting available would be June 27th, even though today was the deadline, that, you know, if we could get an application together over the next few days, and I think just asking for the waivers that, you know, you're going to talk about with the board.
Right, we wouldn't do this kind of like verbally without a paper trail here, so.
Right.
You know, we, I can't grant you waivers on something where I haven't even, we, as a board, we haven't had a chance to even debate the semantic content of what it is that you're requesting in a formal way. So I think that's probably the.
So you're saying you, you need the full application first and then you'll.
I need, what I think we probably want to have is something that's not necessarily the full, but I think you're going to want to work with Paul and see where we can perhaps find corners that aren't necessarily going to be, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Damaged by cutting, right?
Sure.
So.
Okay.
But I, do we have any, yes, Mary?
So I have a question. So it looks like Paul in his memo to us speaks generally about waivers, but then also mentions a waiver for, to submit a storm water management plan. Are we talking about a site, a waiver of site plan review, or are we talking about individual waivers during site?
I'm alluding to, to grant me as many waivers as you feel comfortable with. I'm not limiting it to storm drainage.
Right.
So, yeah, without seeing all of the, I mean, I can understand not sending in, I, I understand the, the reason is not having the, the full application because, because a full site plan requires a lot of other things.
Right.
Our shorthand memo though doesn't really give us a lot to go on with respect to, I, I don't think, because you're expanding the parking lot, I'm not sure that, that a waiver of a site plan special permit is possible. And I'm not sure why we would be doing the storm water waiver, because that's a permit that's before the Board of Selectmen.
Correct.
So I'm not, so Paul's memo is just a little unclear to me on that.
I think what he meant was that generally that is part of an application, is that if, if instead of having it be required with the application materials.
Right.
That storm, that drainage, all of the drainage caps were separate.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would think at the bare minimum that we would need a list of the waivers that you're requesting rather than us tell us, us tell you what we're willing to waive. I would think it would come from you. I don't know if that necessarily means for informal discussion.
Okay.
To need to fill out the entire application and submit all that.
I can rely on.
But at least to know what you're looking at, so we can then say, okay, well, in order for us to consider a waiver for this, that, or the other thing, we would need to see this, that, or the other thing.
What I'll do is I'll ask my, my engineer to assist on waiver requests then.
Right. Please, Mary.
Just a bigger question for me, and I think it's the bigger question for us granting waivers, is that without having an application, the, the public doesn't necessarily know what we're going to be voting on tonight. So I think there's a, a public notice kind of issue that we would have if we, if we voted. I think, you know, certainly, certainly if the indications are that we can grant you some of those waivers, you know, particularly a parking lot waiver, if it's, I mean, certainly the Family Pantry does wonderful things and, and you, and you clearly need more parking down there, if it falls under any of those categories, I'd certainly be willing to support it. I'm just concerned about us trying to vote on it when, when, on a, on a public hearing, on a, just a public notice issue for a meeting, I'm not sure that, that the public would have any information to know to show up and.
But you can understand my position because when I'm talking to surveyor and the engineer, they're saying, well, what do they want? You know, because they're busy and boy, I've been trying to get, get contracts for a long time now, but, so they're saying, you, you just go find out what they want.
So it, so it looks like, from the memo that Paul gave us, it looks like it triggers site plan review, which would have a whole slew of other things that you would have to do with a new site plan and new, and if the storm water, if it's enough to trigger the storm water, that I don't know enough about because we typically require that, that the Board of Selectmen has approved the storm water plan before we go forward, but we, we're typically not the ones that are granting that storm water destroy permit unless we're referring to, unless we're referring to a different section in the, in the statute without staff here to answer that question.
The Selectmen never raised an issue of storm water, so.
So, I mean, I just, I, I would suggest, and this is just my, my thoughts to the board, I would suggest that a minimum application get, get done so that then we can, it can be, because if you do need, I think even a waiver of site plan would require.
A hearing.
A public hearing.
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to look up the sections.
So what I'll, what I'll do is, based on tonight, I'll, I'll just fill out the application and ask for the waivers and I'll let you respond.
Perfect.
That's the, that's the best process.
Okay. And I, I would also just make sure you triangulate with Shayla and Paul before the next meeting so that we have, so you're not spinning your wheels and we're not outside of our lane, so.
Okay.
If you're in touch with me tomorrow about getting that together, I can help you out with showing you what papers I'm going to need back. And then Paul's in on Thursday and you can run some of that by him.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for taking the time. We'll see you soon.
Okay.
So I'd like to open public hearings, part of the agenda this evening. We have, we start with an item that was continued from the 28th of March and the 9th of May. It's case number PB 2023-08. Richard Thompson, through his agent, Bayside Build and Remodel, is requesting a special permit for two family use. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, Section 325-51N, Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. Property is located at 100 Route 28, Assessor's Map Number 10, Parcel L5, and the residential medium density RM and commercial highway 1CH-1 zoning districts. Town one.
Okay, this has gone through a number of, of people and, and through the Planning and Community Development Director has emailed us a, a, his views on the issue. And the conclusion of his, I, I don't know if you have this copy of this Harwich Planning Department memorandum on this. And his conclusion was based on the exceptions for pre-existing non-conforming lots above. The application complies with the requirements of Section 325, so forth, 32551. I recommend that the board take testimony and vote on the waiver request. Since the application complies with the zoning bylaw, the board could vote to close the public hearing and act on the application if there is no major issues at the hearing. So essentially he has said that it's approved as far as he is concerned. It's, I don't know what other information you'd like from us or.
Okay, Shayla, was there anything that was highlighted by Paul to you verbally on his report?
No.
That he brought up in particular that you.
They were kind enough to mention only a brief, in brief passing, how they had to go from here and on a recommendation from the planner went to the Zoning Board of Appeals to get a variance from the 40,000 square feet when it was determined that they didn't need that variance, so they've been kind of around the block for this. That's it.
Okay.
And we'd like it to be as simple as just listening to testimony.
Great. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I need, I guess I need to be educated here. Since town meeting approved the accessory apartment language that we worked on earlier in the year, is this special permit even necessary any longer?
That's a good question.
So, to you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The ADU by law, we won't know whether it's approved by the AG for another 120 days. So there's two, two different items, and an ADU is different than, than a two-family. A two-family.
Right.
Has no restrictions on it, and anything built under the ADU has restrictions on it, based on the, based on the bylaw that we passed a town. So two different handles completely.
Okay, thank you.
So one thing I want to, I'm Robert Ward from Bayside Build and remodel up and acted an agent for Richard Thompson as property owner while he was away for the winter season. So, and this was previously filed and heard once. What we had discovered at the last hearing, which is his EBA hearing, that in fact, we did not need a variance because based on the subject property, we're below the 40,000 square foot requirement, which in this particular zone, CARM and CH1, that if it's pre-existing, that under table two, one or two, I believe it is, that as long as it's not a vacant lot and it's pre-existing, that the pre-existing non-conforming structures, as long as they fall within the setbacks, and it's not.
Setbacks requirements, so.
And it's not change in the character of the town or, or any such nature, that a two-family dwelling would be allowed under the code of the town, the code of the town of Harwich. And that's what we discovered and then we reopened up for extension on this hearing today. And so what this essentially does is allow additional housing in the town of Harwich. And this property has been updated over a period of 12 months. It's actually been brought to some of its original state from 1865 to, to reflect that nature in the West Harwich Special District. I believe that's what the town is looking for the parents to become, back to its original state, and it will be continually maintained like that for as long as Richard owns it or if it's passed on to another owner, it will be also continued to be maintained in that state.
This is the Captain Ellis house, right?
Yes, Theodore, Theodore Ellis home.
Any other questions from the board? It looks like that's basically, was it two waiver requests?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just my first request is, it seems like the, the town planner rules that you were, did not need the waiver under the 40, for being under 40,000 square feet because of that pre-existing non-conforming.
Yes.
Lot, not what you're understanding through your conversations.
That, that is correct, that in fact, we didn't need that waiver after all.
So the only, so the only waiver you, you really need is the.
Drainage.
Is the waiver from the drainage area map.
Calculations with pre-existing structures. There's no change to any footprints.
And the siding for this has, matches the original house. The windows with the various lights matches have all been replaced and match the original house, so it just looks like it belongs.
Yep, I know, I'm right there in the same neighborhood.
Oh, okay, so you've seen.
Oh, yeah, drive by.
The improvements that it made since I've owned it.
Yeah.
It was a mess.
So, yeah, sorry. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Sorry. Okay. Shall we close the public hearing?
So I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Could I ask, could the second one?
Uh, Craig.
So I would move that we adopt the following findings of facts of case PB 2023-08, Richard Thompson, seeking a two-family special permit. The applicant is Richard J. Thompson, trustee. Advocate's agent is Robert Ward, Bayside Build and Remodel. Owner is Richard J. Thompson, trustee. And his address is 100 Route 28, West Harwich, Mass 02671. The location is again 10028, Harwich Assessor's Map 10L5-0. The property is located in zoning district CH-1, which is commercial high density. The development type of use is a two-family. The lot area is 32,974 square feet. The property owner is looking to renovate the existing garage, which is attached by an existing roof to the main dwelling into a one-bedroom apartment, creating a two-family dwelling in the same footprint. The applicable laws and regulations for the use special permit pursuant to the code of Harwich is 325-51.N and Section 32555 for special permits. The application documents include a Form A, special permit application and narrative, existing conditions, plan of land by Paulie Sweetser, PLS dated 10/19/22. Garage remodel, existing plans by Marissa Gary, dated 1/23/22, and revised on 12/13/22 and 12/30/22. Existing floor plans, elevations and section drawings prepared by Mutuo Construction, dated 12/23/22. Garage remodel proposed plans, including elevations, floor plans, sections and framing plans by Mutuo Construction, dated 12/23/22. The butted request form, a municipal lien certificate and the appropriate filing fee. The hearing date for this public hearing has, this board took testimony on three dates, I believe.
Just one other date.
Uh, 3/28.
3/28, 5/9, and today on 5/23. So I would further find that the lot is a pre-existing non-conforming lot in pursuant to 32554A1 and 2, which does not require a waiver based on the lot size. I further find that the, the floor area for each dwelling is a minimum of 800 square feet. The common roof for series, there is a common roof or series of roofs that connects the two dwelling units. There is sufficient two-off-street parking spaces per each unit, is that correct?
Oh, there's lots of parking, yeah.
Yes.
15, according to the Assessor's Tax Code.
And that the, this board also finds the fact that the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhoods. The specific site is an appropriate location for such a use structure or condition, that being a two-family dwelling. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, and that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. This includes a provision of appropriate sewage treatment facilities, which provide for denitrification when the permit granting authority deems such facilities necessary for protection of drinking water, supply wells, ponds or saltwater abeyments.
Have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Mr. Chadwick, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Vote is unanimous.
So I move that the board adopt the following waiver request, that the, that this board vote to waive the required drainage area map and calculations as all structures and parking spaces are, on the lot are pre-existing.
You have a motion and a second? Have a second? Ms. Tucker? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
And I further move that this board approve a site, a special permit for two-family dwelling on the property located at 100 Route 28, West Harwich, Mass 02671. With conditions, those conditions being that the, that the units built in accordance with the plans and the application is submitted, two, that the special permit be reported at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, and that any, and as-built plan be on file with the building department and the town planner before the issuance of an occupancy, an occupancy permit. And finally, that any changes would require you coming back before the tiny board.
Motion and a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Chadwick. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Motion's unanimous.
You're all set.
Thank you so much.
Really appreciate your time tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in. Good luck with that.
And to confirm this, I'll get an email or some, how, how do we get a confirmation of this?
I will be in touch with the procedure.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Shayla, that's a regular, it's a special permit, so it's going to go through the 20-day.
Exactly.
Period. So you're going to, when the decision's drawn up.
a site plan review and use special permit for an increase in allowed hotel motel use by more than seventy-five hundred square feet of floor area as required pursuant to the Harwich zoning law by law sections three-twenty-five dash nine, three-twenty-five dash fifty-one. Proposed building expansion is to create an additional hotel, to create additional hotel rooms and to renovate buildings at Waco Set Resort and Golf Club. Property is located at twenty-one seventy-three Route twenty-eight, head of the Bay Resort, map one fifteen, parcel S one dash three in the Commercial Highway Two, CH two zoning district. And I believe our next meeting is on the thirteenth of June.
That's what was agreed to.
Okay. So I'd like to entertain a motion to continue this to a time no sooner than.
So I move that we continue public hearing for PB twenty-two-three dash oh-seven, Round Cove Resort Owner LLC and Four Cove Landing Road Owner LLC to June thirteenth.
Thirteen.
No, earlier than six-thirty p.m.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Motion is unanimous.
So I move that we allow this application to be withdrawn without prejudice at this time.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Without prejudice is to suggest that they can return at any time.
Correct.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now open case number PB twenty-two-three dash sixteen, Chelsea Nicholas et al. and Jason Stromeyer are requesting a site plan review and change of use in order to convert their main house into a five-unit B and B, bed and breakfast with expanded parking. The application is to the Code of the Town of Harwich, section three-twenty-five dash fifty-five, three-twenty-five dash one fifty-three, three-twenty-five dash thirty-nine and M. Master Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine. Property is located at two-thirty Church Street, Assessor's Map ninety-eight, parcel B three dash nine in the Residential Rural, RR, and Drinking Water Resource Protection, DWRPD. Zoning districts. So I'd like to entertain a motion to vote to withdraw this.
So I would move that we allow this application to be withdrawn without prejudice at this time.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Without prejudice is to suggest that they can return at any time.
Correct.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now open case number PB twenty-two-three dash sixteen, Chelsea Nicholas et al. and Jason Stromeyer are requesting a site plan review and change of use in order to convert their main house into a five-unit B and B, bed and breakfast with expanded parking. The application is to the Code of the Town of Harwich, section three-twenty-five dash fifty-five, three-twenty-five dash one fifty-three, three-twenty-five dash thirty-nine and M. Master Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine. Property is located at one fifteen Route twenty-eight, Assessor's Map ten, parcel W seven dash one in the Commercial Highway CH dash one zoning district and the West Harwich DCPC. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for your time, we're glad to be here this evening. Like Duncan said, we're requesting a change of use for our house at one fifteen Route twenty-eight in Historic Captain's Row in order to convert it to a bed and breakfast. We live full-time on the property, plan to continue to do so, and then the carriage house to the rear of the property will be maintained as a single-family, which we use as a seasonal vacation rental. We are here for a site plan review special permit and are seeking a waiver for drainage calculations, given the fact that the house is pre-existing and we have made no changes other than removing non-permeable material, i.e. asphalt driveway, and replacing it with drainage materials, which is gravel parking area.
Great. Shayla, did Paul leave anything of note that he wanted to
I wanted to make note, there were four letters that I think I left with your packets, all in support, that were sent in.
And there was nothing that he said that was, that pops out from his report here?
No.
Okay, very good.
Is there a staff report?
Yes.
I seem to have a copy of the staff report.
There's one right here.
That I can see, unless it's buried in here.
Why don't you take the memorandum here, because I suspect you're going to be reading from it. Any questions from the board? So it looks fairly straightforward.
Can we read the staff report into the record, because that's typically what we do?
Yeah, sure, we can do that. Would anybody like to do it, or? I can do it if, I've got some water, so I can make it through without choking.
No, I just, I think it's important for the, for the meeting, so that people know what the
Right. Okay, so, why don't I start at project description instead of going through all the data? Okay, so we have the property owners are proposing to convert an existing residential structure into a five-bedroom B and B, creating a mixed-use property. Applicable laws involve the special permit pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, three-twenty-five one fifty-four D, three-twenty-five fifty-five. On four eighteen, the applicant submitted a special permit application. Public hearing notice was advertised to the Chronicle on the fifteenth and the eleventh, excuse me, the fifth and the eleventh of this month. Copies of the application were sent to the following departments inviting them to comment: Health, Water, Fire, Constellation, Public Works and the Police Department. The application documents included Form A and narrative, the municipal lien certificate, site plan, existing and proposed conditions by Moran, dated October thirteenth and revised twenty twenty and revised July thirteenth of twenty twenty-one, so this has been a while. Lighting and landscape plan, floor plans, request for waiver, abutters' application and fee. The special permit, public hearing was scheduled for today, and it's happening right now. The planning director's comments: One, the applicants are seeking a site plan review special permit in accordance with requirements of the Code of the Town of Harwich, as said above. They must meet the requirements for all special permits in accordance with section three-twenty-five fifty-one. The section of the bylaw requires a planning board to make a series of findings listed below. So the findings for conditions of approval for special permits are: Board of Appeals or Planning Board shall not approve any application for a special permit except for a special permit for a site plan unless it finds that in its judgment all of the following conditions are met. Use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Specific site is appropriate location for such a use, structure or condition. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. This includes provision of appropriate sewage treatment facilities, which provide for denitrification when the permit granting authority deems such facilities necessary for the protection of drinking water, supply wells, ponds or saltwater abeyments. The next item, the subject property has an existing main house, an attached cottage and a detached carriage house. The owner plans on renting the existing carriage house and rooms in the existing five-bedroom house. The owner plans to live in the existing cottage attached to the main house. Property is in conformance with the applicable zoning requirements for that district. The landscape and lighting plan shows seven standard parking spaces and one HP space. The application indicates that they are proposing ten new parking spaces. There is a driveway in front of the carriage house that appears to be large enough for the two to three parking spaces, however, the spaces are not delineated. The applicant has stated that the carriage house has three bedrooms, the main house has five bedrooms, and the cottage has one bedroom. There will be a total of nine bedrooms within the three buildings, and section three-twenty-five dash thirty-nine requires one point two-five parking spaces per bedroom. Based on the parking requirements for B and B, the total of eleven point two-five spaces is required, not are required. The applicant should revise the landscape and lighting plan to show the number of spaces that can be provided in the driveway of the carriage house. If the applicant cannot provide the required twelve spaces, they should request the board waive the requirement for one or two parking spaces. The board will need to vote on the waiver request to waive the requirement for submission of stormwater management plan. The applicant is proposing to remove an asphalt driveway and replace it with stone dust surface, reducing the amount of impervious coverage. Board has received four letters in support of the project from abutters'. Draft conditions of approval, special permit shall not take effect until a cop, well, I don't think I need to go through this now, we'll handle that later on this evening. So that's kind of the background, and he ends up by saying he recommend the board take testimony and discuss whether the application complies with special permit requirements. And, there we go.
So we can note that we did update the parking plan with a revised version that does show that we have the twelve instead of the fewer than
Has that been submitted to?
I think it's with your plans.
Yes, if not, I have a copy.
The caller document?
Yes, the original one showed the carriage house driveway with no parking delineations, and the revision shows four spaces, yep.
Great.
Do you want to advise, do you want to go, I think I have an older version.
Yep.
Oh, thank you.
We've got it here. Sharing is caring. Dave, any questions? No? Mary and E.
So I guess my question is, so you had revised the landscape and lighting plan to show the spaces, so the only waiver you're really looking for is on the stormwater management plan?
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you. I think I read, it was in Paul's report, the town planner's report, excuse me, that you intended to rent out the carriage house?
Correct.
And the main house would be the B and B portion. I'm just curious, is that weekend rental, weekly rental, six-month lease? How do you intend to?
Yeah, right now it's a seasonal, weekly, summer vacation rental. The reason that we opted not to rent it long-term is because it's really not comfortable to live in full-time. We spent a winter in it while we were renovating, and it was pretty unpleasant, so I wouldn't subject anyone to that until we are able to go in and insulate it properly for full-time living.
Yeah, yeah, there really is no interior insulation, so we actually would like to be able to do more long-term rentals for it eventually, but that first requires getting funding through renting and running the B and B to be able to actually do those renovations. But we're also cognizant of the kind of housing situation for the town, and we've thought about that for future possibilities.
That was great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions before we open it up?
So I just have a question, what other permitting do you still need to seek? Have you gone, have you gone through Board of Health, have you gone through?
Yes, we've been through our Board of Health, we have, we have our food permit already pending a final walkthrough before we're ready to open. All of our building permits have been pulled and handled, and then I'm working with the town administrator to make sure that we have the right licenses for operating once we do open.
And I, I seem to recall you came to Historic.
We've done our Historic, yes.
And so no changes to the outside since you've been to Historic? Okay. All right.
At this point, I'd like to open up to the public. Anybody wish to? Mr. and Mrs. Urbano, I see you've been monitoring the situation, I'm sure.
Been monitoring it with much joy. I wrote a letter, I don't have much more to say to you other than that, but, you know, as a member of the Captain's Row, and I think I'm a direct abutter, I'm at one fifty-two Riverside, right around the corner, but as a member of the Captain's Row, we're excited, everyone I talk to, we talk about the house. It's kind of an example of uplifting the community and preserving a historic structure, so, yeah, we're here to support them and hope that you can approve it for them. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Cindy.
Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. I just want to also mirror what Sally just said. I've been watching it almost every other day I drive by because I'm so excited, I've actually taken a tour from the beginning when they bought it, so it truly is going to add to everything that we've worked so hard with the DCPC. So this is definitely one that I hope you guys give two thumbs up and lots of hugs to, because it's a great project, and thank you both very much.
Thank you very much. Cindy, further discussion?
So I just want to put on, on record the notes in support that we had. Robert and Virginia Doyle, who are, say my husband and I support wholeheartedly the establishment of the B and B at the corner of Riverside Drive and Route twenty-eight in West Harwich. The new owners have done an outstanding job of restoring the house. If only we could get the owner of Bishop's Terrace to do the same. It's a common theme. We received an email from Kathy White at Gordon Ritchie Road. I'm ready to support the Chelsea Nicholas plan for the B and B at the corner of Riverside Drive and Route twenty-eight in West Harwich. As a longtime resident in the area, I'm thrilled to see the wonderful restoration of this elegant historic home on Captain's Row. It is an ideal use of this large property and is certainly a welcome addition to the neighborhood. And then Mark Kelleher at twenty-two Gordon Ritchie Road also wrote, "I wholeheartedly support the bed and breakfast planned on Captain's Row and owned by the Nicholas family. They have poured sweat equity to make this part of West Harwich a beacon of progress." And then, as you just noted, the Urbanos had also sent us a note in support of the same, so.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions?
Do we have anybody online?
I think it's just the camera.
Okay.
So, I'd like to just express my support and enthusiasm. I drive by it, again, I've probably driven by it five hundred times since you've owned it, because I drive, I have to go by it every day to go to the post office, so, and I have to say, I can't imagine how you've made so much progress incrementally over such a long period of time. It's really great to see, so, I support it entirely, I hope our board does too. So I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing, since I hear no more. Have a motion and a second, possibly? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
So I would move that we adopt the following findings of fact regarding case PB twenty-two-three dash sixteen, Nicholas Stromeyer, one fifteen Route twenty-eight, which is a site plan review special permit. The applicant is Chelsea Nicholas and Jason Stromeyer. Landowner is Chelsea Nicholas and Jason Stromeyer et al. Landowner address, one fifteen Route twenty-eight, West Harwich, Mass. zero-two-six-seven-one, and the Assessor's Map, ten lot W seven dash one. Property is located within the Commercial Highway One and West Harwich Special District. It is a split lot. Development type, this is a change of use and redevelopment. Lot area size is twenty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-six square feet. The project size is really increasing, is an increase of ten new parking spaces. Project description, the property owners are proposing to convert an existing residential structure into a five-bedroom bed and breakfast, creating a mixed-use property. The applicable laws and regulations, the applicant has applied for a use special permit pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, section three-twenty-five dash one fifty-four D and three-twenty-five dash fifty-five. The applicants submitted a special permit application on four eighteen twenty-three. The public hearing notice was duly advertised in Cape Cod Chronicle on the May fifth and May eleventh, and the project application was sent to Health, Water, Fire, Constellation and Public Works and Police Departments. The application consists of a Form A and narrative, two municipal lien certificates, three a site plan with existing and proposed conditions by Moran Engineering Associates, dated ten thirteen twenty and revised seven The public hearing notice was duly advertised in Cape Cod Chronicle on the May 5th and the 11th. And the project application was sent to Health, Water, Fire, Conservation, Public Works, and Police Departments. The application consists of a Form A and narrative, two municipal lien certificates, three a site plan with existing and proposed conditions by Moran Engineering Associates dated 10/13/20 and revised 7/13/21, four a lighting and landscape plan, five floor plans, six a request for a waiver, seven abutters application, and to eight the required fee. As we stated, the special permit is on a public hearing for tonight, 5/23/23. Further finds that the use as proposed and as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, two that the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use structure or condition, that the use will, the use as proposed will not be a nuisance or a serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, and four that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. This includes the provision of appropriate sewage treatment facilities which provide for denitrification when the permit granting authority deems such facilities are necessary for the protection of drinking water supply wells, ponds, or saltwater abatements. Further, that the subject property has an existing main house, an attached cottage, and an detached carriage house. The proposed application is that the carriage house and the rooms in the existing five bedroom house will be rented and the owner plans to live in the existing cottage attached to the main house. The property is in conformance with all the applicable zoning requirements and that there shall be, the nine bedrooms will require 11.25 spaces and the landscape and lighting plan shows that 12 parking spaces are being provided.
Have a findings?
A question. Should we clarify that it's not the, the plan shows seven standard and an addition of 10 for a total of 17, but that the total is 12, I believe?
12 is the total, correct.
Yeah. Is 12 plus two plus, what was it, 12 plus two plus three or something? Is that the way it was? Or no, 7 plus 2 plus 3?
It's, calculations, calculations are based on nine bedrooms.
Right.
Which require.
There were two originally, you found seven, and then the ones in front of the.
Right, but there's a revised landscape and lighting plan that shows 12 spaces, which exceeds the 11.25.
Right.
So should we say that rather than modify or amend it?
Well, I just said that the plan, the landscape and lighting plan shows that there are 12, that there are the required 12 spaces.
So we have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
So I move that the board vote to adopt and waive the requirement for a submission of a stormwater management plan. The applicant, based on the fact that the applicant is proposing to remove an asphalt driveway and replace it with a stone dust surface, thus removing the amount of impervious coverage.
Come on, second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So I move that this board's vote to adopt a site plan review special permit as provided in this application pursuant to the third of town Harwich, section 325-154D and 325-55. That the special permit shall not take effect with conditions, the conditions being that the special permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk, the 20 days have elapsed after the filing of the decision, and that either no appeal has been filed or an appeal has been filed within such a time period, and that said decision is recorded with the Barnstable County Road District, indexed under the name of the property owner of record and the parcel address. That this special permit shall lapse within two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal referred to in general law, chapter 48, section 17 from the grant thereof, if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause or in the case of a permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause. That the proposed use shall operate in conformance with the submitted site plan and the application statements that were provided, the application documents that were provided to us and referenced here in this decision, and four that the special permit will run with the land, conditions of approval shall be binding on all future owners and that any changes which may be required, which you may choose to make, you'd have to come back to the board before you can adopt any, any additional changes in what's approved tonight.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Any questions, guys?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Appreciate the good work.
Can't wait to have your word.
So this evening, we continue with our final case, number PB 2023-17. Catherine Hollister, treasurer, I assume, is requesting a.
Trustee.
Special, trustee, excuse me, special permit in order, why don't I ever get that right? Is requesting a special permit in order to build a residential pool within the Six Ponds special district. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, section 325-94A4 in master rental law, chapter 48, section 9. Property is located at 16 Sammasett Road, assessor's map 72, parcel E7 in the residential rural RR District in the Six Ponds special district.
I can throw on remotely.
Do we have Catherine Hollister online or?
Representative from the pool.
Any representative from the Snyder Swimming Pools?
Yes, hello board, Ed Snyder from Snyder Pools, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, how are you?
Good evening.
Good evening. So yes, this, this pool, 12 by 26, is a one-piece fiberglass swimming pool, 7,000 gallons. This will have a cartridge filter, non-backwashing system, saltwater sanitation. It does meet all the setback requirements for that district. Just, I'm a little unclear, if you wouldn't mind filling me, filling me in on the Seven Pond District requirements.
So Seven Pond.
Six Pond.
Excuse me, Six Pond District requirements were part of the conditions of approval, I believe?
Yes. I was just a little unclear as to, as to what the, what the requirements were in that district, what we're looking out for, I suppose.
So our Six Pond special district is, is a drinking water protection district?
Right.
And a groundwater protection district?
Understood.
So I'm just seeing some of the, have you seen a copy of the, of our town planner's draft staff report?
I have, yes.
Okay, so his, his recommended conditions would be part of the requirements. So can we read in?
Yep.
A staff report.
Yeah, let's read it. Does anybody else want to read the staff report or? Go ahead and do it. This is, the property owners are proposing to construct a 12 by 26 in-ground pool with surrounding pool deck. And they have applied for a special permit pursuant to section 325-94A4 and 325-51. The process involved on the 19th of April, their representative Edward Snyder of Snyder Swimming Pools submitted the special permit application. Public hearing notice was advertised to the Chronicle on the 5th and the 11th. Copies of the application were sent to the following departments inviting them to comment, Health, Water, Fire, Conservation, Public Works, and Police. The application documents include a Form A and narrative, the municipal lien certificate, site plan, proposed conditions by Moran dated the 3rd of April. Said municipal lien certificate. Request for waivers, abutters application, and the fee. The waiver requested is the topography of the land in two-foot contours. The lot is small and flat. Two, mark areas subject to wetland protection act on plan. Detailed calculations for a required parking. Notations indicating any variances or zoning relief granted for property. Lighting on plan and easements on plan, as well as building plans pertaining to the house, pool plans provided instead. And the hearing was scheduled for today and is taking place today. And the director's comments are as follows. The applicant is seeking a use special permit. There are no specific findings or performance standards required for accessory swimming pool within the Six Ponds district. The applicant must meet requirements for all special permits in accordance with 325-51 special permits, and the special, the section of the bylaw requires planning board to make a series of findings, and I'm not going to list the findings because they're all spelled out, and we will be discussing those presently. And the final, the final comment that he has, that Mr. Halkiotis had was that he's, we discussed whether or not the application complies with the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, and that the specific site is appropriate, an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. So any questions from the board or? Yes?
Paul, I think there are some regulations about fencing for pools, and I assume, looks like there's on the Moran Engineering site plan, it looks like there's a fence delineation. I don't know if that's north or not, from one side of the house, and then the other fence would go from the property line to the deck. I assume it's a second floor deck. Just a point of clarification, question?
Yes, correct, it is.
All of the above?
Correct.
Thank you.
So could you ask, explain to me a little bit more about the first waiver requested on topography of land in two-foot contours? I'm not sure what that means.
Sorry, Chairman, are you asking myself, Ed Snyder?
Yes.
Okay, yes, yeah, so the, the land does slope a bit towards the rear property line. Minimal patio on the far side, so there'll be a bit of subgrading, about a two-foot buildup of some of the existing material to subgrade for their patio, and that'll be pitching away to landscape gardens prior to the fencing.
So you're basically creating a, like a plateau, kind of a?
Yeah, yeah, we're, from one end, correct. So there's going to be a retaining wall, which is already an existing retaining wall that's going to be removed and redone. It's an, it's an existing railroad type style retaining wall on the back of the house, about four foot off, as you can see on the plan. That's going to be removed, lowered slightly, and to a three foot, and that's going to be a concrete retaining wall, flower bed, pool, eight feet off of that, and four foot of patio on the, on the rear side. So yeah, so that grade difference is roughly two feet from one side of the, of the pool to the other. So that'll be, that'll be subgraded, tapered down into a flower garden.
And I just had one other question, and that was about the water discharge from the pool.
Right, so with the fiberglass pool, it is, it is, you cannot lower, it's, you cannot lower the pool. You have, you slightly drain the pool for winterization, six inches, really, just to get it just below the skimmer height. With the fiberglass pool, you never empty it. That's the, one of the things with the fiberglass, unlike, say, a gunite, you do not want to lower the pool completely, so that water always stays in, in the vessel. The, the filter system is a non-backwashing system. It's a cartridge filter. So the, for, for cleaning, they would be brought to the driveway, hosed off, and then reinstalled.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Quick.
Thank you. The proposed pool equipment pads, I assume, I shouldn't assume, is that a pump and some kind of machine that's going to be emitting noise?
Just, yes, it's a variable speed pump, one variable speed pump and the cartridge filter and the salt system. So that's located along the side of the home, right against the, against the foundation. Very, very, very quiet, nothing like the, like the old, old style, single, single speed systems.
So, so no enclosure for sound deadening or anything like that? Just the?
No, sir.
The pumps are out in the open?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mary?
So just one question through you, Mr. Chair. It looks like all of your waiver requests are really just requests not to make these notations on the plan, correct? I mean, your, your waiver on the topography is just so that you don't have to provide a topographical plan for the special permit?
I'm sorry, was that directed towards?
Yes, to you.
Me?
To you.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I, the topography, I believe, is on the plan. The only, the only reason my belief we were here was due to the Six Pond area.
Well, because there are no specific performance.
The gradient. Go ahead.
So typically.
If they meet all the criteria for you.
Perhaps it's because your, your topography is going to be greater than two-foot contours? I don't know why that would be a waiver, but.
Bear with me one second. The sound is very, very low. Just give me a second. I have to take my ear off of the phone here.
Might I just say something?
Please.
To what Mary had to say? That is actually one of the requirements in the application. So whenever there's an application requirement.
It's to have a, to have a topographical plan.
That in the.
Included, and that's what I'm saying. I think the requested waiver is to not provide a separate topographical plan. I don't believe it has anything to do with the two-foot contour. I believe that is correct.
I believe that too.
Okay.
No other questions for me?
Any other questions from the rest of the board? Anybody from the public? Hearing no other comments, some?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
So I move that we adopt the following findings of fact for case PB 2023-17, Kay Hollister and Snyder Pools, 16 Sammasett Roll, Road for a pool special permit.
G. Oliva Living Trust. Applicant's representative is Snyder Swimming Pools, Inc., landowner address is 16 Sammasett Road, Harwich, Mass. 02645. The location is 16 Sammasett Road, Harwich, Mass., assessors map 72, Lot E7. Zoning districts are residential rural in the Six Pond Special District. Development type is a residential accessory swimming pool. The lot area size is 16,553 square feet. The project size is to build a 12-foot by 26-foot in-ground swimming pool. Project description is the property owners are proposing to construct a 12-by-26-foot in-ground pool with surrounding pool deck. Applicable laws and regulations, this applicant has applied for a use special permit pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, Section 325-94A4 and 32551. On 4/19/23, the applicant's representative, Edward Snyder of Snyder Swimming Pools, Inc., submitted the special permit application. The public hearing notice was duly advertised in the Cape Cod Chronicle on May 5th and May 11th. Copies of the application package were sent to the following departments, inviting for, inviting them to comment, health, water, fire, conservation, public works, and police departments. The application documents include, one, Form A and narrative, two, a municipal lien certificate, three, a site plan with proposed conditions by Moran Engineering Associates dated 4/3/2023, four, a, sorry, seven municipal lien certificate, four is a request for waivers, five is a butters' application, and six, the necessary, uh, necessary filing fee. Hearing date was held for this special permit application on 5/23/2023. We further find that the use as developed, uh, the use as a swimming pool, as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles and pedestrians, and that adequate and appropriate facilities will, will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. This includes the provision of appropriate sewage treatment facilities which provide for de-nitrification when the permit granting authority deems such facilities necessary for the protection of drinking water supply wells, ponds, or saltwater embankments. Uh, the subject property has an existing house, the property is in conformance with the applicable zoning requirements for that district, um, and the applicant is requesting certain waivers.
That's the motion, do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Well, I move that the planning board vote to grant the following waiver requests. One, a waiver of the requirement for a part of topographical plan, uh, as the lot is small and flat and the land will be in two-foot contours. Two, um, waiver of the requirement to mark the area subject to the Wetlands Protection Act on plan. Three, a waiver, um, to submit detailed calculations for required parking, as it is not applicable. Four, a waiver of the requirement to make notations indicating any variances or zoning relief granted for the property, as it is not applicable. Five, a waiver for noting any lighting on the plan as it is not required, uh, for this application. Six, a waiver to note any easements on the plan, as there are no easements, it's not applicable. And seven, a waiver to provide building pa, plans pertaining to the house, as pool plans were provided in their stead.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chadwick. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then I move that we vote to grant a pool special permit in case PB 2023-17, with conditions, those conditions being that prior, one, prior to draining water from the pool, foreclosure in the off-season, the owner shall not chlorinate or superchlorinate the pool for three days to lower the concentration of chlorine in the water. Two, that water discharge from the pool shall not cause, shall not cause any soil erosion. Three, the special permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk, that 20 days have elapsed after the filing of the decision, and that either no appeal has been filed, or that an appeal has been filed within such time period, and that decision is recorded with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds and indexed under the name of the property owner, of record, and the parcel address.
Four.
Four, that the special permit shall lapse within two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal referred to in General Law Chapter 40A, Section 17. From the grant thereof, if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced, except for good cause, or in the case of a permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause. Not, uh, five, the proposed use shall operate in conformity with the submitted site plan and application documents and statements referenced therein and in this decision. Six, that the special permit will run with the land, conditions of approval shall be binding on all future owners, and that, um, any changes would, um, would require coming back before this planning board.
Motion on the floor, second by Mr. Chadwick. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Board. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. So we have, uh, only two more items left, that's the end of our hearing portion of the, um, evening. We have, uh, minutes from four separate meetings, uh, two of which were very brief, the 25th of April, the 1st of May, the 2nd of May, and of course, the 9th. If you'd like, we can, I think we probably ought to do these separately, whether there are any comments before we go in and take a vote, we'll do separate votes for each one. Does that make sense, or do you want to just do a blanket? Do a blanket? Were there any comments?
I move that we vote to approve the minutes of 4/25/23, 5/1/23, 5/2/23, and 5/9/23.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I'm gonna abstain, 'cause I wasn't here on the 25th.
One abstention.
I'm sorry, on the, uh, on the 9th.
Stole you down, that's with one abstention. So the last item, um, is to do with the idea about having a filing deadline, um, that's more clearly articulated. There was some discussion over the past couple of meetings about drift in protocols, uh, the general protocol of having material in prior to, uh, what was it, uh, four business days before the meeting, so that everybody would have a packet and enough time to digest the material, um, prior to the meeting. That included remote participants who were off-site, and I know I, Mr. Chadwick would like to open up this discussion.
Uh, I, I, I think that the letters Paul drafted, um, meet the requirements that we had talked about. Um, it's pretty concise. I think, well, if, if everybody's in agreement, and this is a policy, uh, that we wish to adopt, I think, though, we need to figure out, um, when it becomes effective, so that we can educate, uh, beforehand, rather than somebody who's in the process already, we haven't given them this notice.
Right. Pivot?
In both documents, uh, it says, uh, that the information submitted after Thursday morning deadline may not be included. That can be interpreted two different ways. Could be that it may or may not, might or might not, or you may not, it will not, so I think it needs to be more explicit. Or if the intent is, uh, to allow, if we can get it in, that'll be fine, if we can't, no, you're out of luck.
I think that's been the operative, from, prior to COVID, every effort was made, and then what happened during COVID, it was just, the email floodgates were open, so it kind of came in dribs and drabs. And, um, so I know, Mary, you have some opinions on this, so let's...
I have a completely opposite opinion on this.
Okay.
I think if people are providing their, they can come and they can give oral testimony, and I think it's up to individual board members whether they want to consider, uh, something that's before them. I think if you choose not to, to review something that is before you, you run the risk of, of being challenged on your decision for not having reviewed the information. So I, I understand, and, and, and I, I get the point of trying to implore people to get their paperwork in so that we have time to discuss, but I think this is a problem that is, this is not a new problem, this is something that happens to permitting boards, and it has been happening at permitting boards for 100 years, and will continue to happen regardless of what we do, but...
Right.
That's my two cents.
Well, I think there's probably a middle ground here, is that we would like to optimize, so we have certain standards, but obviously, this is a public hearing, so come at it, right? So, your best bet is to help us...
I understand, if the, if the Board's wish is to, is to put out this letter and to make that requirement, that's Board's wish.
Well, wasn't this basically what was going on, on this board prior to 2019?
No.
Twenty, no?
You have always had people bring things in at the last minute.
Well, that's true.
And I'm sure Sheila will tell you that in the years that she worked at zoning Board of Appeals, people bring things in at the last minute. It's what happens, it's a public hearing.
No, we're not trying to say that you don't get anything at the last minute, all I'm saying is that this was basically the protocol for the courtesy of the office, that we had essentially a packet together.
You all, yeah, but we still have a packet, but people are still gonna bring them in when they come in. I, I just, I think, I think it has always happened, and it will always continue to happen. I understand the, the want to try to make it stop, I just, we can put it in our rules and regulations, and we can, we can do all of those things. Um, I just, I think you are, I think we're worrying about a problem that is just gonna continue to exist.
Okay.
That's just my two cents.
Um, my sense is, um, that this, this is almost an educational process, and I agree with you, it's been on forever, and it will probably continue, but I think we'd be remiss if we didn't try to ta, make an effort to it. And the way I understand it is, we can always make a decision to continual meeting if, at the last minute, we're inundated with, as I mentioned last week, you know, 15-page lawyer's document that we get at 6:35 and are expected to read it. I might say I'd like to move for a continuance, because I haven't had the opportunity to review this.
Or you continue, or you can choose to, to vote without it.
Right. Or we take a recess, and we all agree, say, we're gonna take five minutes of recess, or ten minutes, we'll digest this material, and we'll come back, and...
You understand that 15-page doc, document is usually what the attorneys are telling you about, and they're just handing you the, the paper as backup.
Right.
So they're gonna speak to it anyway. So, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to go with whatever the board decides. If the board wants to send the, the letter out, that, that's, that's fine, I just think, I, I don't think it's gonna fully solve the problem. And it's, that's just my...
I would agree. I don't think that the problem completely can be fully solved 100% ever, as you said, it is probably gonna continue, but I think if we can do something to help educate the public, it's really, it's in everybody's best interest is the way I look at it. It's fair to the applicant, it's fair to the butters, anybody else who has an opinion, it's fair to the boards, if all information get considered, and before a decision is made.
Mr. Rick?
Please.
Is there any precedent in other town boards that we know of?
People have rules and regulations all the time that require it.
Well, I'm talking about this rule.
We have our own, we've, it was, it was always a rule, you, you get your pa, paperwork in before a, a meeting, nothing different.
Is there another board in the town that has the specific rule?
I would ask Sheila what they do with the zoning board.
That is what they attempt to do.
Right. I think that's what it is, right? And it's an attempt.
It's an attempt.
To have a little bit of structure, knowing that it's gonna be sloppy and... The weird thing is, is that what it, when you can use that, the, to an advantage, looseness of the system to produce, like, Perry Mason courtroom antics, which we've seen, you know? It's like you come in late, and it's like, da-da, well, I mean, that's part of the reality of it, right? So, I mean, but this isn't, uh, you know, this is not a courtroom, and that's the whole thing, is...
Just to, uh, say, say what you're saying in a little different way as well, like, are there any, so we've talked about the benefits of this, are there any risks to this? Like, what could the risk or downside be? Like, a, a lot of folks are saying this could help, is, is there anything that this would, is it could be detrimental at all?
So anytime you, anytime you don't, you don't take testimony, there's always a risk of appeal. You folks probably haven't been on the board when we've been sued, but we get sued on any number of occasions, running...
I wasn't talking about...
No, 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 wait.
Not taking the test, I'm, I'm talking about just the act of the letter.
So, the letter alone, no, but it's the, it's the, no, it's, it's what happens on the hearing, if you, if an applicant doesn't think you listened to their doc, listened to their presentation enough, or, you know, uh, somebody who's opposing a permit thinks you listen to too much, you're, you're always, we're always open for all of it, right?
Would this be better, like, just a reiteration of, are you...
No, I mean, I think it's a policy statement, and you're, we're trying to get all the information in, and if this is the Board's wish, is to reiterate the fact that it's supposed to be in so that we have it for, for our agenda, then, when I say go for it.
Sheila, do you have an opinion?
How much, how much it's gonna help?
I do. I think, I listened to what, um, Mr. Harris said, and I thought a change in saying instead that perhaps your testimony may not given, be given the same weight that you might want, or something to that effect, that just says, you know, this is, you're gonna dilute your own process if you send it in later, you're gonna dilute your own argument, something to that effect, instead of, it may not be given, uh, it may not be read by the board, I forgot what it said, but something instead that said it may or may not be given the same weight.
So why don't you say, any information submitted after the Thursday morning deadline, um, why don't you say...
Risks being...
Board members... ...may not have the opportunity... ...to fully review the information you provide... ...if it is submitted after the Thursday morning deadline.
We're still saying may not?
And then just put a period after deadline, and say that information will not be included in meeting packets... ...any original meeting packets.
Distributed to the board.
And may or may not be discussed. And you can discuss it if you want to, but you don't have to.
Right.
During a meeting.
My only objection is the split infinitive, but I'm...
So fix it, I'm doing it on the fly as I'm, as I'm sitting here. So let's fix it.
I'm not. My old boy was.
Is it too late to withdraw my comment?
No, I think it works.
I think it works. I think we're just looking for courtesy, that's all, right?
Yeah.
I mean, neighborliness.
Yeah. Give everybody...
I don't know if we need to vote on anything, but I certainly stand by what Mary just did to adjust that passage.
Well, I think, um, Mr. Chairman, I think we're saying that the onus is more on the a butter, rather than, uh, so we've taken away some of this will, or, you know, we aren't gonna consider it at all, so we're softening it a bit? Is that what I heard, Mary?
Well, I think it's probably...
We're putting the risk on the, on the public.
I think it's on everybody.
Right.
Yeah.
The, the system, the process does not benefit from you withholding, from participating in the early, you know...
I, you're, you think because of the last sentence, that it's aimed, that paragraph is aimed towards, towards commenters and not applicants?
Yeah. We're, our problem probably is with applicants, and we're directing the letter, uh, to the...
The butters.
The butters, because our, the problems that we use as examples, um, most notably are the attorneys.
If I might, though, I disagree with that, I get a lot of a butter comments after Thursdays.
Hmm, yeah. I think we've seen that.
As a, as a, well, we've seen that in one particular case, but have, is that, is that a general rule, or is, are we kind... general rule, or is, are we kind of, are sites being impacted by a case that has drawn a lot of attention?
I think you're going to get comments because they're getting abutters notices. So when people get a notice in the mail, they're going to, if they want to comment, they're going to comment.
Usually, usually, I think that the area we were going to, that it applies to both, would be a great change.
Okay.
As we may, because it's the may not, will.
Shall.
Shall.
Must.
Must. You're out of luck.
Always.
Yeah, we were developing rules in our condo association. And we phrased things that the contractor couldn't do, as we, contractor shall not, and then a lawyer said, no, you have to use the word must. Shall, by court decisions, has been permissive.
Must. Shall is usually required, and may is usually not.
Right.
It seems, if the, if the issue is.
Go side.
In, inability of staff to do what they need to do because of the timing of this, it seems to me to become a little more important than just arbitrary regulations, because we want to regulate people. I have a fundamental dislike for regulations that aren't there for a specific reason. And if it's just, well, it would be better for you to get it to us, you might get, have, we might have more time.
I think it's more for us than it is for staff. And so that, because we're the ones that have the onus to review, to review the application materials for a public hearing, so, you know, I think Shayla will get it out to us whenever she can, but, but I think it's really about the members of this board having an opportunity to look at it.
And are we, you know, that's kind of, that kind of comes along with the territory of volunteering for stuff. You volunteer for stuff, you do the work. And if the work, if the, the pace of the work is dictated by people have, being able to get stuff in it on time, then it's on us. I agree with you. It's on us to, to do it. But I don't, I don't think we need to find an excuse to maybe not suggest that we couldn't do it right.
Oh, I see.
You couldn't do it right without the adequate time?
Without forcing people to comply with some arbitrary deadline.
Why do you say this is arbitrary?
I think the practical standpoint is Shayla sends out the agenda packets on Thursdays for Tuesday, so that they're ready to be picked up.
But how often do we get?
You're not mailing them anymore, are you?
Nope.
How often are they, is there stuff that, and I guess that's the point, that there's stuff that doesn't get in there on time? But do you think this will really solve that problem, other than disappointing people? Sorry, you didn't get it here by noon.
No, we're going to still entertain things that come before the board, regardless of the time, but it's to everybody's advantage for an equal hearing, or for a fair hearing for the people that are making the motions and the, and the judgments. I mean, I think it's, it's to all parties' advantage to have as much available at a time as matters. There's no compulsion, nobody's forced, and nobody's going to be excluded. I just think it's a matter of courtesy. Maybe that's the language that's not in there. It's a matter of, you know, neighborliness or whatever.
I guess Emily asked the question, is there a risk for sending this letter out? No, there's no risk in sending this letter out. No risk in, in telling people that we want items ahead of time. You know, I think people will violate it anyway.
Right.
When they want to.
But maybe a couple won't.
And maybe a couple.
Right. That's right.
And maybe the people you're really trying to put on notice, the attorneys, will pay attention.
Well, maybe we could get, when Paul's back and refreshed from a week of striper fishing, he can take a look at the language and see if it is modest enough, but, you know, crisp enough, so that we kind of get across the courtesy aspect and also the efficiency aspect. What do you think?
One more edit.
Yes, great, sorry.
No, no problem. I would suggest, or I guess I had asked the question, and maybe it's just Paul, or Mary, or Shayla, could this also be, could this language, or a modification of this language to convey the same meaning be placed on the, the cards that go to all the abutters? Does this?
I would, so I would suggest if we're going to do that, if we're going to do this, then we put it not only on the abutters card, but we also put it on the, the public hearing notice that will be, you know. Written comments can be submitted.
Perfect.
By such and such a date on, you know, by whatever the date is, the Thursday before the hearing.
Yep. Perfect. I would agree.
And leave it open like that. They can be submitted and added into the.
Right.
And I would also, I, I don't want to make a gigantic thing about this, or splash the news across the, the Cape, that we're trying to do something arbitrary, or unfair to one party or another, but use it as a, excuse me, use it as an educational process. And I don't, I don't even know, is it appropriate that Paul maybe could talk to a reporter and say, can you write up a little blurb? This is something that the planning board is proposing to implement or implementing, or something like that, just an FYI, everybody aware.
Not a bad idea. The other thing is that there was a concern by a number of abutters in a recent case that we had, that, and they were very explicit, that they didn't feel as though their material had been considered, and they wanted to have an index on the website of all the material that had been submitted. Well, the, you know, if it's, it's automatic, if you're going to participate, it's like, that's how you guarantee participation, is you get it in. So you, that removes your doubt. That, to me, is, I think, one of the things that, like, that prompted this reconsideration recently, too, was that very fact, that they were very vocal about it.
That had we posted everything.
Is that a matter of it's still ongoing? Because if it is, we shouldn't.
Right. It's not a matter, it's a matter of process that's, that we saw, and that is, we've also seen it elsewhere. We saw it in something we deliberated over here on Parallel Street, as a matter of fact. So, the same thing. Anyway, I think we probably have enough to go forward with the second iteration of the language.
I will bring those possible changes to Paul, and he will think those through. I do want to make note of the last thing that was in your packet. We're not discussing it. It was just a notice. It happened to come as addressed to the board. We often get these Chapter ninety-one A applications to the planner, but I didn't want to not put it out for you. And I talked to her with Paul, and he said, it's actually a notice about a, if you have comments. So just read it, and if you have comments, then.
Great. Any other?
Can the comments go back to Paul, or they?
No, no. It's all part of, it, there's information on there about how you get in touch.
Okay.
Any other business for the board?
I just have one thing, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Excuse me. Some of you may, may have seen the Select Board, going to get used to that, Select Board be, meeting on May eighth, or the agenda, on which I was listed as an agenda item for a appearance of conflict of interest disclosure form. So I thought I'd just give the board a little bit of information background on it, and I'll simply make it quick and read the, the cover letter that I submitted to the Select Board when I completed the application and gave it to them for approval. Gentlemen, just noticed the above referenced item on the BOS meeting agenda for five eight. Felt some additional background might be helpful. My wife and I were in need of an attorney for estate planning purposes, documents, et cetera. Before meeting or engaging any lawyers, I called mass.gov and spoke with Attorney Lauren Duka for advice on engaging any attorney for personal business that may occasionally appear before the planning board. After a series of questions and answers conversations, she stated there should be no issues, but advised me to complete the Mass General Law Form twenty-three B six, disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest, end quote, and submit it to the planning board, appointing authority, which is the board, uh, Select Board. We have now engaged Attorney William Crowell for our estate planning work, and thus I submitted the form to the Select Board. I also asked Attorney Crowell to review the completed form, which he has done and has no issues. As stated in the form, I have no concerns that there is or will be a conflict of interest. However, if one were to arise, I would recuse myself, as I would do in any other case, before the board, from debate and voting. So I just wanted full disclosure, and, and the board, last evening, the B, Board of Selectmen voted to approve your conflict of interest disclosure. Really not, right, but our office has shared your disclosure with town clerk's office as well. If you need anything else, let me know. Any questions?
Question or, or comment? Comment was, I filled out the same form today, registered with the town clerk for this purpose that I am a volunteer at the food pantry, so did the same thing, called the Ethics Board, got it wherever else, so that's on record.
Did you talk to Laura?
No, somebody else, Attorney of the Day.
Yeah, I guess that's how they work. She was very helpful.
But there are twenty-three different disclosure forms, and then the one that we needed was buried within those. It's not like it's a simple.
Depending on what you call it.
Yeah. I went, before I even called them, I looked through our conflict of interest training program documentation to see if there was anything specific about my situation, and I didn't see anything specific. So that's what I said, well, before I even call an attorney and start a conversation with anybody, let me talk to them and make sure it's okay.
So if you look on the conflict, if you look on the state ethics website, there are advisories for planning board members, and they will give you certain examples of situations, but you should always call the Attorney of the Day for an answer. Would you return?
Sorry, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Come on, somebody can oppose that.